Good evening and welcome to the Flood Plane and River Corridor Proposed Bylaw Public Hearing Meeting, Monday, August 21st. It is 6:00 PM and we have at the table Jeff Chevalier, Katie Johnson-Adlin, myself Angela Sanborn, and on Zoom we have Ann Gollum. And, Winetta, has this meeting been properly warned?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Are there any additions or amendments to this agenda? No, no. We'll go right to the presentation. We'd like to welcome Alyssa Sabado from Wyndham Regional to present to us for the Flood Plane and River Corridor Proposed Changes to the New Fain Bylaw. Good evening and welcome. Glad to have you.
Hi, yes, thank you for having me. So, um, do you want me to host the PowerPoint? Or were you planning on doing that from your end?
Winetta, were you gonna do it, or do you want to just turn it over to Alyssa to do it? To run the PowerPoint?
Alyssa could do it.
Okay.
Wonderful crew from VCTV. Austin is helping, helping you out with that right now, I believe.
Yeah, our screen.
Okay, um, can you see the screen?
Yes.
So, yeah, we are, and I can't see you guys now, just to let you know. So please speak up if you have questions, or I can end the show and kind of do it without it being on the show.
If I could just ask a question before that, Alyssa. Are there folks there in the room who are attending the meeting?
There are seven people, eight people present.
I was going to say, if folks have questions, raise your hand and I'll call on you during the presentation, and that way we can keep it going.
That would be helpful, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I'm gonna go over just some key highlights of the Proposed Floodings Lead Delivery Hazard Regulations for New Fain. We've been working on this. I've been working with the Planning Commission for quite a while, as you know, and we're excited to be at this point in the process. And so, here we go. So this overview is going to cover, well, some, some basic questions. What does this regulate? Which areas will be affected? Why are we considering the update? What is the impact to existing structures? What types of development are not permitted under any circumstances? What types may be permitted? What is the process to request permission? And what is the, what are the overarching criteria used to evaluate any development request? So, these were some questions that Ann thought would be helpful for you all to consider. So what does this regulate? Uh, so this new-
Alyssa, Alyssa, the pages are not moving. You're still on the first slide.
Oh, oh, okay.
The presentation never started. It's still in the other view.
Um, let's see. Okay, can you, you can see this now?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay, odd. Okay, can you see the overview and the questions?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm gonna keep it out of the slideshow mode because that was what it was in, but I guess it didn't like that one. So, okay, so those are the questions again that, that I just read off. And so the first question here, what does this bylaw regulate? Uh, so your, so your current bylaw regulates only special flood hazard areas, which are also regulated within those proposed bylaw. Those are the areas that are mapped by FEMA. And then the, the proposed bylaw regulates those areas in addition to the A and R defined river corridors and small stream 50-foot setbacks. So we'll take a look at the National Resources Atlas where we can see both of them. So, these are just, these maps are, are not ideal. We can pull up the atlas and, and get some, um, some, you know, interactive maps where I can show you and we can zoom into questions that you may have. But, um, the areas in cream here are, are the river corridors. And the, the brighter yellow are, are the small stream setbacks. So the river corridors are areas that A and R has actually mapped to be subject to fluvial erosion, which is a different type of, but related hazard to the special flood hazard area. So the special flood hazard area is generally more of the inundation flooding, where you have water coming in and then water kind of slowly dissipating. Whereas the fluvial erosion is where you have the erosive hazard of the moving floodwaters and the damage caused by that erosion. So, this bylaw would regulate both of those flooding areas versus just inundation. A lot of the damage that we see, and we'll, these are just some kind of sample maps, but a lot of the damage that we see in Vermont is related to the erosion and the, the stream banks eroding and structures within those hazard areas being damaged because of that. So this is a, a snip from the FEMA map portal. So this is like, what, this is what the FEMA mapping looks like online. So, it's a lot less, um, you know, it, it, the A and R atlas is an easier way to, you know, zoom in and see what's, how the structures are overlaid with the areas. These crosshatches are, are base flood elevations. So this is used, the FEMA maps are used to, in, within areas that have them to determine the base flood elevations. But that's a little bit more detail maybe need for this. But, why are we considering this update? So, um, I think the Planning Commission came to me originally because there was a concern and a desire for an increase in resiliency and doing what, what could be done to, within the regulatory realm, to increase resiliency. And that is really what the point of this bylaw is, is to, you know, safeguard the built and natural environment. So, I know there was a lot of damage caused from Irene, and you guys are also part of the declaration for the July flooding event. So you, um, probably have some firsthand, uh, recent memories of issues caused by flooding in your community. So implementing these changes helps to limit future damage by considering the flooding realities and not adding new vulnerabilities. So, um, the FEMA mapping is pretty much, even within FEMA, understood that it's, it's prob, it's not realistic in terms of the true complexity and, um, impact of the hazard in terms of the area that gets flooded. It's pretty much, you know, regulating to FEMA minimums is not recognizing the, the true hazard that exists. So, um, that's why A and R developed river corridors and encourages towns to regulate to a higher standard and account for the flooding hazards as we understand them and experience them in hilly topography of Vermont. So, um, so basically this bylaw will ensure that what can be done within the special flood hazard area and the river corridor is done to specifications that make it less likely that it'll be damaged during future events. So this is basically, you know, a forward-looking document. It's not changing what exists now, but it is considering with more of a resilient eye what could be put there in the future. And by doing so, um, the town would become, would increase your emergency relief assistance fund from 12 and a half to 17 and a half percent. So, with a federal declaration, um, there are four base criteria to get 12 and a half percent, and having, being a member of the National Flood Insurance Program is part of that. But if you regulate to the higher standard, including river corridors, then the state incentivizes that by giving you a 5% increase in your public assistance amount that the state gives you as the match above the 75% match. So right now you get 75% from FEMA, 12 and a half percent from, from the state. And then if you do this river quarter bylaw, you'll get 17 and a half percent from the state. So, less local match required. Um, so what is the impact to existing structures in these areas that are, would be newly regulated and the areas that are currently regulated? So basically there is no impact to existing structures that are making no changes. All existing structures can remain. Nothing has to be removed that is already there. What types of development are not permitted under any circumstances? And so here are seven items that are permitted in all situations, meaning the special flood hazard area and the river corridor. So the, the new structures is, is part of what the regulation, what A and R requires to, you know, get the river corridor, you know, be considered to be regulating the river corridor, and meaning, um, the limitation that, that you're putting on that area. They don't want to see new things placed in the river corridor. Um, so storage and junkyards, new fill, except in certain circumstances. Accessory structures in the floodway, that's a specific area of the floodplain. It's a small area, um, and that would be, you know, anything larger than, uh, or any, or I should say, or you can't build accessory structures for human occupation or larger than 500 square feet. Critical facilities, that's like government-run facilities or jails and such like that. RV parking for unlicensed or not drivable RVs. Meaning you can still park an RV there, but it has to be licensed and fully ready to be moved. So in the event of a flooding, an RV would have to be able to drive out, not just, you know, an RV that sits there and never moves.
Did it take a moment, Alyssa, to see if anyone has any questions at this time? Anyone?
I do.
Katie?
Um, Alyssa, would you please elaborate about the new fill? Is that like to fill in people's yards that have disappeared? Is that what you mean by that?
No, the fill is, let's look at this here. So this is the actual table that, um, that exists where, where this is called out. Um, right here, you can see fill as needed to elevate existing structures. And just fill in general.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, as you can see, it's conditional if there's a need to, um, elevate an existing structure, you know, it would be reviewed. But they don't generally want just fill being put in there because that takes away from floodplain storage.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Good to go.
Uh, so what types of development may be permitted? Uh, so what if you want to make an improvement to an existing structure that decreases the current distance to the waterway? So if you're in the special flood hazard area but outside the river corridor, you can apply for a conditional review for that. But if you're in a river corridor-
Oh, you're breaking up.
Sorry.
Can you text her and let her know if she's broken up?
You're prohibited from getting closer to the, um, what that means-
We missed a little bit because you broke up. If you could start from the beginning of, if you're in a river corridor?
Oh, okay, sorry. Um, if you are in a river corridor, you can't build closer to the waterway because, um, the reasoning being that your, the structure will become even more vulnerable to the erosion of the waterway. So, what that means in, you know, in reality is that somebody who's considering an addition to their home should be in contact with the zoning administrator because they can do an addition to their home, but it would be about, you know, a discussion about how and where to do that. In other words, you can put things downstream or on the other side of the house versus towards the river. So things like that are, um, you know, how, how you, how, the difference in how it's approached in the consideration of the hazard. So what if you want to add open fencing and elevated siding or at-grade parking for an existing building? So it's not prohibited. If you're in the special flood hazard area, that's going to be administratively permitted. If you're in the river corridor, it'll require a conditional use, meaning that it would just need to be put before your development review board to, and have, uh, it would have a comment period from, from A and R so that the consideration of the erosion, erosion hazard could be looked at. So again, this is, this is the full table. Um, so there's X is prohibited, and then C is conditional, I is exempt, and then P is permitted. So there's a mixture of things depending on the zone that is affected. And, so what is the process to request permission? So, um, I mean, there's a couple of different processes. If you, you know, there's, there's a process just regarding the mapping. If you disagree with information on the, the bounds of the, of the flood hazard, um, you can contact the zoning administrator, but he would just be advising you on how to approach FEMA or A and R regarding, um, appealing those bounds and, um, how to do that, which processes differ depending on that zone. Applications for a development permit would go to the zoning administrator, and, and what's required would depend on what's proposed. And the, the bylaw has all of the guidelines that, um, go into those applications. So some things can be administratively approved by the ZI, and if a conditional use review is needed, it would be heard by the development review board. And, um, the applications all go to A and R for a 30-day, a required 30-day comment opportunity. So, there's some fee assistance with consideration of, of the permitting. And this, what are the overarching criteria used to develop, evaluate any development request? You know, FEMA standard language here. So, um, it's, you know, basically, you know, points to the, the purpose of this bylaw, you know, being to be developed reasonably safely without the fluvial erosion risk. So, um, yeah. And that's, that's it. Other than, um, if there are questions about this, Merle Tessier is your zoning administrator. He's also the floodplain administrator. I'm available as well. And John Burger Campbell is the regional floodplain manager. So he's with A and R and, um, he is the person who, the 30-day comment period. He deals with that. So I'm kind of a technical resource for Merle if he has questions, um, or, you know, residents as well. So, that's what I have for you. I'm gonna go ahead and stop the share.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Governor, yeah, thank you.
Welcome to the discussion.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to point out that I hope that you received also the comparison table that I had sent to Kate. And then also I sent a, um, yeah, I sent kind of just a, like, an overview document that discusses the reasoning, um, behind it as well. So, I will say that, um, one of the important things to keep in mind, and, you know, it's something that's very related, is the fact that, um, there is currently underway the beginning of, of a statewide FEMA map update process. Wyndham County is in 2025, and in conjunction with a new mapping going on, uh, effective with FEMA, there will be a required bylaw update for all towns that are, want to maintain status within the National Flood Insurance Program. So, even if you chose not to do this bylaw update, um, you would be required to do a bylaw update with it to meet the new standards because the current bylaw you have doesn't, doesn't have all of the, it wouldn't pass the compliance review with FEMA, even without the river corridors. It wouldn't pass the compliance review currently. So, a bylaw update would be required to maintain National Flood Insurance Program coverage. So, but this bylaw, um, would fulfill that purpose. Um, so you wouldn't, when that time comes around, you could rely upon this bylaw to have already met the compliance, uh, review for, for the, for the new mapping.
Good. We're ahead of the game.
Can I just say, I don't have a copy? Is that the two documents that Alyssa just referred to?
Yes.
Um, Winetta, if you could email those to me, that would be great.
Yeah, I can email you, Ann.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Yeah.
And then we should also get them up on the website. Perfect.
Altogether.
Yes, altogether.
So does anybody have any questions or anything for Alyssa about the presentation and what she shared? Yes, hi, Phil.
Is there any of you people from the boards, appointees, any of the positions in town? Planning commissioners or the IBs?
Me and Jane.
None of the planning commissioners?
The three of us, sorry.
The three, right, right?
Kate? Kate? Are there any, um, suggestions or, um, considerations being made for town roadways that follow floodplains?
Um, no, no. I mean, the bylaw doesn't, doesn't regulate the roadways. So, I mean, I guess, can you explain a bit more about your thinking?
Sure. Um, we have the same repairs being done over and over again. So it seems like maybe Vermont needs to take a harder look at what it's doing for roads. And I was just wondering if there's any pressure coming from FEMA to make some changes as well.
Yeah, that's a great thought, and I agree with you. Um, unfortunately, that's not something that's covered by this bylaw. However, um, I would say that that type of issue is definitely considered by FEMA and addressed by FEMA through their grant programs. So, um, basically mitigation grants. Um, if there's areas that Jay wanted to look at for, um, mitigation consideration about, you know, hardening or, or what have you, you know, in terms of getting recommendations from experts. Culvert upgrades, bridge upgrades, that kind of thing that is covered through the FEMA funding and mitigation grants.
Okay. Thank you. But there's nothing like coming down that says, you have to move your roads now because this is silly? No?
No.
Great. That would be expensive.
Yeah, this is really just about, um, you know, considering future development in terms of buildings and placement of those. And, um, significant, when you're significantly improving an existing structure, that would be, um, considered for this new, um, regulation. Basically, if there's more than 50% of an improvement, it needs to be brought into compliance with new, new standards, even if it is an existing building. So, um, that's something. But, yeah, that's, that's really what, what this regulation covers.
Great, thank you.
And also, you know, storage of stuff and in the floodplain. And it's all listed in there, but in that table you'll see, you know, there's not just buildings, but that's, you know, development in the built environment or storage in the environment.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions, any other concerns? All right, moving on to next steps. Where do we go from here now that we're having our public hearing?
I think what we understood is that after this, uh, public discussion, that we just should decide at what select board meeting we would like to take a vote on whether or not to adopt it. That that vote has to be before October 3rd. Yes. And so we could, we have, I think, at least two, two or three meetings prior to October 3rd. And I believe we could choose any of them to vote on whether or not to, um, to accept this. And I noticed that David Cotton and Ronald Beckett just joined the meeting. I wondered if they wanted to ask any questions or had any issues they would like to bring up.
No comments?
No comments from David or Priscilla Cotton. We're just listening in, seeing what's-
Well, I am more than happy to answer any questions that come up after this meeting. So hopefully you have my contact information in the PowerPoint, but also, you know, I'm pretty easy to find on Wyndham Regional.
I'm not sure unless anybody has any questions for Alyssa, or we can just, as the board, we can decide on a date for our next steps, which is to vote to adopt or not this, um, bylaw. And it looks like our next meetings are September 5th on a Tuesday due to holiday on the 4th, and September 18th-
And then October 2nd.
And then October 2. Does anybody have, I know you are pretty much gone September.
September 5.
I will be here the 5th, um, to 18th. I, I don't know. I'm at the baby study.
Excuse me, Alyssa's gonna call in right now.
Oh, she is? Okay, great, thank you.
What is our, um, deadline?
October 3rd.
October 3rd. So we have to do it no later than the 2nd.
Exactly. Ann, what is your availability like?
I won't be in person, um, through, uh, through September 24th, but I will be on Zoom. So I will be there in person on October 2nd. But I, we, I think we could do it at either meeting in September, and I'll just be on Zoom.
And should we have Alyssa with us while we vote, just in case there's questions beforehand?
We could ask her, sure.
And here she is. Welcome back, Alyssa. Sorry about that.
No, that's, uh, not your fault. It's shocking, but yeah, I, I-
Very shocking. Um, we're discussing dates. Do you need to be at our meeting when we vote?
Um, I'm sorry, my video is not working here for some reason.
That's okay.
I don't, not necessarily. Not necessarily, it's just, you know, if you want me to be, I I can, I can be depending on the date, but um.
Just in case there's any questions?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'd I'd like to be, but yeah, I I think, you know, whatever works for you.
I know Alyssa cannot be there on um. September fifth because she has a conflict with the WRC meeting. But I believe she'd be available on September eighteenth, is that correct, Alyssa?
On the eighteenth, that's on Monday, is that, is that the?
Correct.
Monday, um, yes, yeah, I could do that, yep.
That's my feeling, it's September eighteenth.
Yep.
What if we made it the first?
I'll do my best because they're mad.
Okay.
You have chaos happening there.
What were you saying, Anne?
I was saying maybe we should make it the first item of business.
I think that would be good.
And that way duck and duck out and duck in or?
We could put it right before, after the additions and amendments to the agenda, we can start with that and then go right into a regular select board business.
Yep.
Is that workable?
Yeah, absolutely.
Time to prepare yourself and call it good?
Yeah, I can make sure I have somebody watching the food.
Okay, so that's what we'll plan on is to have that on our agenda to vote on this on September eighteenth at the beginning of our meeting.
And then I would just add that if anyone has any questions, so please send it in to the um, to Winetta. And we will uh, get them to Alyssa and get any questions answered, so. That'd be great.
Yeah, thank you.
Katie? I, and I'm requesting so much, I just wanted to thank you all again for doing this and thank Alyssa while she's still um, up there for so much. We should have worked on this, I think it will be really good for New Haven, but I know it's been a lot of work, so.
And I'd like to thank the planning commission for all of your work.
We are way ahead of the curve based on what I heard in meetings last Tuesday, um, so this is great.
Yeah, thank you, Katie.
Thank you for coming through.
Excellent, well, if there's nothing further, we'll let you enjoy the rest of your Monday night and we'll. Move on.
All right, well, I'll see you during the eighteenth and I'm here in the meantime with you, Nikki.
Great, thank you so much, we appreciate you and all that you do.
Bye.
All right, can we have a motion to adjourn the floodplain and river corridor proposed bylaw public hearing?
I make a motion.
And we got the second. Now I would like to call to order the regular select board meeting at six forty P M on August twenty-first. Winetta, has this meeting been properly warned?
Yes.
Thank you, are there any additions or amendments to the agenda?
We need to make one.
Yes.
We need to add the cannabis control minutes to the agenda. They weren't on the ones posted, so we need to have an amendment.
Okay.
I need such an amendment.
I'll send it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, all right. Any other additions or amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll go right to the approval of the minutes, is there a motion to approve the August seventh regular meeting minutes?
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, ayes have it, is there a motion to approve the August seventh cannabis control meeting minutes?
Make a motion.
I have a second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes opposed, abstaining, ayes have it. And Jay is not back from checking on roads, so we have the road foreman and commissioners report and I'll go ahead and read it. There probably won't be a whole lot of discussion unless he signs on and we can save our questions for him. For the next meeting, if he doesn't get back. It's dated August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, number one, the roadside mower had a breakdown that required it to go back. He was able to get the majority of the roads mowed, but not all of them. Number two, we were notified that we did not get funded this year for the New Fane Village sidewalk grant. They had sixteen point one million in request and four point one million available, and so we will apply again next year. Number three, DMI did some pavement repairs on Gramps Hill last week and called to say there were some additional spots that needed to be fixed in addition to the ones. That Jay and him had marked. Uh, Jay had them fix everything as they went and they'll come back up tomorrow and figure out how many more square feet need to be fixed.
Hurrah, because there's a big one that still needs some love.
Number four, I had a phone meeting with FEMA this afternoon and will be having the first in-person meeting next week with the FEMA recovery person. Number five, Jay had a meeting about the depot road box culvert today and it looks like it won't happen until next year at this point. The holdup has been getting the cement mix approved for the cement box, thank you, Jay Wilson, Christopher Road Foreman and Christopher Williams, Road Commissioner. Is there a motion to approve the Road Foreman and Commissioners Report?
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, any discussion? Seems like there needs to be a lot.
In terms of the sidewalk grant, does that mean there's nothing that can happen this year because we have no money for it? We don't have anything left. Boy, it's not easy.
So we do have the consultant report and all of the diagrams and everything that they went ahead and did, so we can always move forward with that one there, is money available?
And I have something to add to that, and that is um, that. The Vermont Department of Health did put in an application for us and I will be meeting with some folks this week about that.
An application for?
They, for for helping us figure out stuff of how to move forward, which would include other grants. And things that we can do to generate money to make this reality. So I will have some information to give you all next meeting.
Okay, great.
Specifically in terms of the sidewalks, Katie?
There he is.
As part of, hi Jay, as part of the walkable New Fane. Proposed project that we have currently, yes.
The walkable, eligible New Fane.
And I'm still, I still don't have, correct? Yes, and that's what this is for, right, sidewalks and new painting?
Um, Jay, we just read your report and we have. A motion to approve, we haven't voted on it yet, we're in the middle of discussion. So. Anybody have any questions for Jay on number one? About the roadside mower, are we going to get it back at some point to finish the job?
He's muted. We have to mute him.
There we go.
Hi Jay, welcome.
Yeah. So roadside mower, I made a couple of quick calls. And it doesn't look like anybody's got one that we could get, this one's already booked once they get it fixed for September, so. Um, it's not looking like it, and I think. Three weeks is never quite enough, um. We may need to go next year a little bit longer, especially since we didn't quite finish them all this year to do a little extra. Extra on it for next year.
Katie, how much do we spend to rent the mower?
Usually about, well, for the three weeks, it's usually ninety-five hundred.
Ninety-five hundred?
Yep.
Is it worth looking at purchasing one? As a long investment or a shared purchase with another one of our sister towns right here in the valley?
So. I looked at a few used ones, new ones are now very, very expensive. I looked at a few used ones and the tractors. Are in relatively good shape because it really isn't much wear and tear on them, the mowers take quite a beating.
Yeah.
And that's, that's part of what, this one's five years old and. It, the mower's been welded many times and so it's, it's a tough life that they have, so. Sharing it could be interesting, um. I, I think it's one of those things, if you could find a really nice used one, that would be fine. But the average one that's been used for five, six years is probably going to be fairly rough, at least the mower part of it.
Have they contracted it out, is that something we could do again next year?
Well, they seem to be hard to come by, and I, the last quote I got. Um, to do basically the same thing we did was, and that was five years ago, four years ago. Was fourteen thousand five hundred back then.
Wow.
Um, so.
Mower piece itself or for a tractor and mower to contract?
That was for somebody to come in and and do the mowing.
Sorry.
And I'm sure it's gone up considerably since then.
I think the last one we had that we contracted, they broke their mower too.
Yep.
Yeah. Interesting.
So you read the part about that we didn't get funded uh, for the mugs, that's, I mean, not unexpected because there's. It's apparently a very popular grant, so.
Did you hear that from Dan Malik?
No, um, from Peter Pochop, the B Trans Municipal Assistance Bureau.
Interesting, because I didn't hear anything about it.
I actually emailed so last week, Jay, um, with that, to that regard, um, there was a. Talk about the Vermont Department of Health having some sponsorship of helping towns do stuff. And they had contacted us, well, I met with the woman on Tuesday. Um, she came, she found me in among the meetings and we had lunch together and she put in. Uh, a, uh. An application for walkable new paint in the town of New Fane as like a practice, so it's there and I have. Meetings to talk with them at some point this week, so I will have more information regarding. Other avenues of grants that we can look into to help fund this.
Okay, and they did say. They did say we should definitely keep applying for this one, I think it's one of those, you just keep working on it and I'll see if Wyndham Regional can help me um. Fine tune it and make it a little more appealing to them possibly.
Do we know about how much it is? That needs required?
Thousand.
How much?
Seven hundred thousand.
Okay.
That's what they've been whispering.
Um, on the paving on uh, Gramps Hill repair there. So he called me, I can't remember, well, the days kind of blew by last week, so some point last week they called, said they're working on it. They found as they were cutting some of the sections open that they needed to go a little further. And they asked me whether to just do the spots C and I had marked or. Fix the, anything that was bad. As they went and I said, no, fix it as you go so that it's done well and then. We'll decide, so he's, I think he's going to come up tomorrow and we'll try to get a price for the rest of those bad spots. Um, and see about that, it it came out quite well, I was, I drove it a couple of times today to see and it it seems to be an improvement, so.
Yeah.
And FEMA is going well?
Yep, it sounds pretty much like the last time, they're going to come meet with us in person next week, I believe it is. And it's the same, pretty much the same setup, it sounds like it was last time.
And Melissa will be at that meeting too?
Yep.
Great. And then the depot box culvert, um, another, what, five years? It seems?
I, it's just one of those.
Will that ever get fixed?
So Mike Grinow, they didn't want to approve Carol Concrete's concrete. So he went to Concrete Systems over in New Hampshire, I think they are. Who's a very large precast place and. The email I got this morning was that fly ash, which I'm not really understanding how it's used in concrete, but. It's a big component that has to be just right, well. Fly ash is in short supply. They had to use a new supplier that made their mix no longer certified. And so that company hasn't been able to get their concrete certified either. So it's just this. I, I, I did find out why that's been so complicated is there was. Things were very lax with federal money and a lot of the contractors took advantage of that years ago. And, you know. Prices were way higher than they should have been, work was inferior, so now they've clamped down to the point where it's, it's so difficult to get anything done. Um, happy medium would have been fine, but they've kind of gone overboard. Um, so even if we get the concrete approved in the next few weeks, it still has to. Sit for several weeks to cure before it can be put in the ground and then it starts getting into November and um.
You can't do anything there then?
I just don't think it'll, it'll happen this fall, so I'm tempted to just put a coat of pavement over where it was dug up to smooth it out and. Leave it until spring and um, I did talk with Mike Grinow this morning. Um, and that's his feeling that it's not going to happen until spring now at this point either, he's pretty discouraged.
Yeah, I can imagine.
Yep.
He answered it, okay, about putting the cover back on the dirt spot.
Yep.
All right, anything further for the Road Foreman and Commissioners Report?
Uh, just an additional item, is there any movement on the gravel pit?
Oh, while I was on vacation, I reached out to Dummerston to see if I could get a copy of their permit that they put in. And how many trips per day and so forth, um. And he was also on vacation, so when he came back, he was going to send it to me, so.
Excellent.
In the next couple of days, I'll have something on that.
Great, I'm in New York, Jay, but if you wanted to talk any of this through, just uh. Call me on my cell phone.
I will.
Anything further on the report?
Nope, I did, while I had time, I ran up to Adams Hill, looked out over, it looks like it's coming really well. Um, so hopefully that's done the next couple of days and. Be on to the next project.
I do believe Katie has something to say about that?
Um, yes, I'm only in miscommunication, which when we left, it was that. When a road would be closed for putting in stuff, we would, I would be notified. So that I could notify all of the neighbors on the hill and that did not happen. Um, which created a lot of frustration with everybody trying to. They come home and get to the bottom of Adams Hill and then have to go around and go the two miles up and around the other direction um, with no notice. And the same with coming down the hill, you then have to go two miles back up and around, um, and um. Despite me talking with Mike in person and sending texts, that has not improved and I was, and everybody's frustrated.
It looks like, at least what I saw, it looks like the culverts are all in, so now it's. It's traveling and smoothing out, which should be just real short.
Right, he, he assured me last week that that would not happen. Uh, again, on Thursday evening and then Friday afternoon, the road was closed. It's like, I don't, I don't know what to do here, how do I make this better? Um, so I don't know if that's going to happen more, if there's more rip rap that still needs to go into ditching, but I need the communication so that I can.
I'll call him, I'll call him in the morning too.
Thank you.
I thought he was letting you know, so I didn't know he hadn't been in contact with you on those.
Not since the very first beginning of it, that one day.
Hey. Is there anything else for the Road Foreman and Commissioners Report? Hearing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, ayes have it, thank you so much, Jay, and welcome back for vacation.
Yep.
All right, moving right along, we will go to the Administrative Assistance Report, good evening, Winetta.
Good evening. Katie Johnson, Applin and I attended the Leadership Summit at Vermont Tech in Randall, Vermont last Tuesday. This conference was attended by community leaders, volunteers, V L C administration. And various agencies representing from a hundred and eighty-seven towns. As well as senators and legislators from our state and federal government. Combined, we attended six classes from the same learning track of advanced town projects more effectively. From planning to execution. We will present you with a detailed report in the middle of September when time allows for better discussion. And then I attended a animal control meeting this morning. New Fane is now one of nine towns that are participating in um. The pilot project with Sheriff Anderson. Uh, they are. Sheriff Anderson shared the numbers of calls the animal control has responded to this year, which is a hundred and eighty-seven. The group is very excited that animal control pilot program is growing and I encourage you to share our results with your family and friends. Um, I have a detailed list of the number of calls and what types of calls. I have a detailed list of the number of calls and what types of calls that were answered, um, including, um, vicious animals and bites, there was eighteen, through the nine towns. Um, seventy-eight at large, thirty-four problem animals, uh, thirty-seven animal welfare calls, sixteen nuisances, and four registrations.
Great.
So they're doing a wonderful job and we're looking to grow our program. So if you know of friends or neighbors in other towns that would be looking to increase their animal control issues.
To reach out to the Sheriff's Department?
Reach out to the Sheriff's Department, or I can send them an email and have them contact.
Great. Is there a motion to approve the Administrative Assistance Report?
Just a vague motion.
Second?
A second.
Discussion. I can't wait to hear about your training. That would be great.
Yeah, we didn't want a crowd tonight. We didn't know how long that would go, so I was like, we could talk for half an hour. I'm not really sure how this is going to go. Uh, but it was great and, and a lot of it was about networking and communicating and meeting various people who are part of like, I asked a question in my second class or my first class and all of these people who worked in Wyndham County Resources came up and were like, here's that card, here's this, and you need to do this and blah, 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 and let's have lunch. Okay, all right, we'll talk.
It was very informative.
And I think Wanetta also, we had planned to meet for lunch and then she spent the whole lunch talking with someone else about something else.
Nice, yeah.
So, um, it was very positive.
Good.
Yeah. Um, and lots of good stuff coming from this.
Number two, um, can I, can I say that all residents of the town, that we have an animal control contract with the Wyndham County Sheriff's Department? And if you have issues with any animals on your property wandering loose, to call the Sheriff's Department because they have somebody that will respond. And we have a contract for that. Um, I've noticed several posts on Facebook and such about animals roaming and it is good to call the Sheriff's Department so they can come out and take care of these animals. Because that's what they're for. So I just wanted to put that out there. Anything else for the Administrative Assistance Report? Hearing nothing, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Sorry, aye.
There she is. Oppose, abstentions, ayes have it. Thank you so much, Wanetta, for all your hard work. Much appreciated. And now we'll go to committee reports. I see the Planning Commission is here. Do you have a report?
We have a lot of news. We will kick off again in September with, um, meetings on the vital organization here, which we'll make sure everybody knows about. Um, we are working on getting together with Planning Commissions from Townsend and Brookline. I see if we can put our heads together and also if they can collaborate. Um, and we are slowly thinking our way through, uh, what's happening in the area. Jay's been an expert on working rentals. Um, and I think those are our big updates. We will not have a, an August twenty-fourth meeting this week, but we'll have.
Excellent.
We'll try to let people know we're not meeting, but.
And again, thank you so much for all your hard work. It's amazing. We really appreciate it. Do you have any updates on DB Fiber?
Um, Breezeboro is, uh, progressing along very actively. And Stanford is also in works, so.
Awesome.
Great. It is moving very slowly and the first costs are doubling every time you turn around, so. It's been going slow.
Well, thank you so much for being a part of that as well. Are there any other committee reports? While Jay is here on your Traffic Committee, do you want to ask him on September dates, what team members available?
Yes, Jay, before you go. Can we, I mean, you don't connect it? Um, can we talk a moment about possible available dates for Traffic Committee meetings for September and October? Um, Angela and I spoke briefly and thought, tentatively, September twentieth might be a date. It's a Wednesday.
Um, hang on.
Sorry.
I kind of did not want to do the third week because we have our fire department annual meeting that week.
Right.
Did you say the nineteenth?
The twentieth, Wednesday, the twentieth?
Twentieth is fine.
Great, six o'clock, fantastic. So, September Traffic Committee, September twentieth at six PM here. Great. October, Jay, do you have dates that you cannot attend?
First Tuesday and second Wednesday.
First Tuesday, second Wednesday.
Yes, fire department.
Fire department on the second and the sixteenth. Um, would, would the eighteenth, that's four weeks out, would the eighteenth be okay with you? Might I say the eighteenth?
Might I say the eighteenth, looks fine.
Fantastic.
I have it in my calendar.
You have it next. So then the October Traffic Committee meeting will be October eighteenth at six PM. That's a Wednesday.
Do you want to go left or right at it?
Uh, sure, we can keep right on rolling, why not?
It's well due three months, so why don't you go to everybody?
Two seconds.
Say there's the same thing as the seventh and eighth, there's fire department stuff, so.
Two, three, four. Um.
And then you're heading Thanksgiving, so probably the fifteenth.
The twentieth.
Or you could skip November and go right to December.
Remember budget season's going to be starting.
We're going to have budget season, so that's going to be every Monday. I might have to switch it up for November, for a different day of the week.
So let's go with the two that you have.
And then at the October, we'll discuss the holiday season and budget season and what people feel.
Sounds good.
Yep.
But never a Tuesday, first Tuesday.
It's the second Wednesday, I can't see. Um, oh, because.
Hey, good.
Did you, um, the next meeting, is that moved because of Labor Day?
Yes. Yes, on the fifth.
Good. Thanks, Jay. Any other committee reports?
I would just ask if Jay could stay on the phone for, um, the folks who want to talk about Rock River.
Well, that's what we're moving right into. I'd like to welcome you all to our meeting. It's good to have you. And it looks like Paul DeDell and other neighbors of Rock River are here to speak. So I will turn the floor over to Paul.
Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Paul DeDell and live at two ten Dover Road in Williamsburg. And I'm here behalf of my neighbors who all live alongside, have property alongside the Rock River. And we're, we're kind of calling ourselves the Bridge to Bridge Neighborhood. Um, starting from the, the Green Iron Bridge, Christine Treeberg, the Carver boss, and then all the way down to the Cover Bridge, we're popular with you know this. And between that, um, we have the Spicers, or John Spicer and family are about, we can't be here tonight. And Ed and Kathy Kalantowski, who have a little, a little house on the river there. Uh, Susan and myself at two ten. And then Gary, Melanie, Kaiser, next door to us, and then Bruce Lansbury. And then, and then Pablo, right there by Cover Bridge. And we're, we're, we're speaking because, uh, of the, you know, increased, uh, river flow and, and damage done since Irene. And, uh, we're, we're approaching this proactively, uh, before things grow more, more increasingly serious. And, uh, so I just want to check with Wanetta, we sent photographs.
Mm-hmm.
Do we, do you have those?
We have them available.
Great, wonderful, thank you. So this is what we're seeing, uh, on, on the Rock River, on our properties. And Wanetta, if you could start with number one. Okay, that's, 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 that's number five. Is that reversed?
I think so.
Okay.
Well, just go backwards.
Okay, we'll go backwards, this is, this is, no, we'll, we'll stay with that one minute, we'll go with that.
Number one?
Yeah. Thank you. So what's, what's been happening, uh, this is behind Pablo's house, um, which is the house that is right next to the Cover Bridge. And what's been happening since, uh, Irene and the increased, the increased storms and increased water flow is that the, and then, and very possibly some of the remediation work that was done in two thousand eleven to get the road back into shape, uh, the Dover Road, is that the channeling of the water has become increasingly intense and has, is eroding the, the opposite embankments. And this one is right behind Pablo's house where his, it's moving in more deeply on his side of the embankment, which is also leading towards the Cover Bridge. So it's undercutting and he's been doing some repair work there currently to, to protect his property. Uh, on July the twenty-seventh, or twenty-sixth, uh, I had contacted Scott Jensen from the Rivers Program from the state. And he came out and, uh, took a look with us, with myself and with Joe Mariano. And can we go to the next photo? That's you, okay, so we're going from, we're going from the opposite end. So what, what Scott, what we looked at with Scott was behind my house and behind Gary's house. But it addresses everything in the same way. In that, uh, with the channeling of the river, uh, there's increased pressure on the embankment that is, is on the Dover roadside of the river, for the most part. And this is a picture of, um, alongside, Christine took this photograph from the Green Iron Bridge. And it's, it's eroding just before the bridge, so that it's heading right for the bridge above it. So there's this, this, again, this sense of proactive, this is, this is an increasing situation that will impact the Green Iron Bridge after all the incredible amount of work that was done to preserve it and put it back up in place. Look, can we go to the next photograph? Thank you. This photo, you can see this, is, is the river heading directly to, behind our house and Gary and Melanie's house. So what Scott, when Scott came and we looked at this exact place on the river from Kalantowski's, Kalantowski's property, is that you can see how, I'm going to just go up here.
Yeah, of course, just chase up, yes.
Thanks, I'm out a little later. Right up there.
Yep.
Is the point, um, where the river is jogging right into that embankment and making a ninety-degree turn. And that's, that's a, it's, and it's eroding the property all along, all along that stretch that goes past Gary's house and then goes past Bruce's house and then eventually reaches Pablo's house. And what Scott was talking about, he said, what this needs is the restoration of the water, of the, of the floodplain. And to do so, his recommendation is, and I think this is happening in a lot of other parts of the river, is to create a bevel, a slope from this side of the river, starting somewhere in this territory where I'm standing, where you, with rock and with earth, you, you create a long beveled slope into the river that's planted with willow and dogwood and so forth. It creates, um, basically it creates access to what this would be called a floodplain. And, and at the same time, he said, you can see how the gravel has built up on the opposite side of the slope. So the channeling goes deeper, goes further to the right and leaves, and leaves that gravel. So he said, to remove that gravel, to lower the level of that gravel, so that the river, once moves into this long slope, this beveled slope, would move over into, into its former place. After Irene and so forth, there was more land here, and we'll see that more clearly later. And it's been since two thousand eleven, quite a bit of land has gone to the other side.
Yeah.
So his approach is, is that, is that twofold, the beveled rock earth plantings, restoring the fact that then the river, when the river comes down, it doesn't channel. It actually allows the flow to move over and access that side's water floodplain and also the floodplain on, on this side, but in such a way that it will come up and gently flow over. Now, it comes in at incredible intensity and dives over the.
It's a long straightaway right there for it.
Yeah, and, and thus floods and is, is in putting increased pressure on our, on our property. Let's, let's go to the next photo. Okay, so this, this is, this, I'm actually standing pretty much at that apex of that ninety-degree turn, right there. And you can see how this erosion is, is happening. And that's going past Gary Melanie's land, down to, down to Bruce's. And the amount of gravel that's, that's growing on the other side of the river. And you see this all along the Rock River. We're, we're looking at this very much in between these two bridges where it's, where it's really impacting us. And so that's where, that's where Scott is saying, all of this land would basically extend into, into that sloping bevel and, and then removing that gravel bank on the other side. And then the next photograph. This is looking upstream to the Kalantowski's house, which is right next door to ours. As you can see, a little structure up there. And you can see the same kind of thing they also have. This is where the river turns by their house and then turns behind, behind our house. And basically the same situation exists there where this gravel bank on the other side of the river has increased as the water has moved over into.
Yeah.
And it's actually always them putting pressure on Dover Road as well, because it's going closer and closer to Dover Road. And, and we have another one?
It's a video clip.
The video clip. So Gary today took a video, and I think this will show the situation of how the land is eroding, but also it's, this is in specifics to Gary's land, but it's also happening in this whole spring.
Here, the property went out as far as those rocks at the top of the screen. It's all been cut away to those rocks there. The river came down and just cut all of this away. You used to be able to walk out and around here.
Great. So what we're hoping, what we're looking for, having done quite a lot of research into how, how do you approach to get, um, floodplain restoration and all lead back to you, back to the town of Newfane? So we're looking for sponsorship, that the town takes a look at sponsoring, uh, restoring this stretch of river. Um, I also, just prior to, just after the big storm, shortly after, a week after, I did a a little seminar with Mike Klein, who was, used to be the head of the Rivers Program with State for many years, now is involved with the River Conservancy, the Vermont River Conservancy. And, uh, he, he talked about how, how the floodplain restoration process is, um, is kind of the, the, what we've learned since Irene, that instead of channeling the river to make it flow the way we think it should flow, it's really important to allow it to access, to access its floodplain. But at the same time, by doing so, you can protect the properties that, and the roads and the bridges that, um, you know, we've put on the river, all these generations.
Yep.
So that's, that's what we are looking for. If anybody wants to add anything to my spiel, please do, but, um, But we, you know, I've been looking into the Emergency Watership Protection Program. I'm sure all this has been on your table before. And also the Hazard mitigation funds as well. Thinking that those would be applicable, but you know, that's, we don't have any way to access those funds. We have no way to actually put that into action to do, to create this floodplain restoration. So that's what we're, that's what we're looking for.
I just wanted to add that since, I guess, 2018 or so, the river has gotten significantly stronger during these rains. And I think it reached its maximum in this last storm we had, where we had five to seven inches of.
I don't think it was that much.
Huh?
I don't think we even had that much, but we had.
We had, and, and I could, I could see definitely how much more powerful the river has become.
Okay.
Oh yeah, definitely.
In a very short period of time. And I don't think that it's going to get any better anytime soon.
No, I would agree. I lost a lot of land from that storm and I'm up on that. What used to be streams were seven, eight feet wide, three feet deep, taking boulders down the hill and dropping them to the river. I don't think we've seen rain like this. I don't think it's something that anybody dealt with a hundred years ago in this area. But it is definitely something we're going to be dealing with for the next hundred years. That seems pretty obvious. The weather patterns have changed.
I think one thing that's been learned is that doing the protection, the proactive protections ends up being a far cheaper approach than having to make the repairs over and over again.
Absolutely.
I have, I have definitely, I drive it all the time, I live up by the Dover Line. And I, you know, every time I drive up it, I'm just, the banks are still so raw and still so ruined in comparison to what they were prior to Irene. And with all of that channel work, nothing was ever done to make them better. And that's surprised me. There was, it seemed like a great idea at the time. But even up closer to Brookside, the same section of river that was channeled to be away from the road is now right back up against the road and causing erosion. And so, yeah, we need to find some solutions. I'm curious if any of you have any grant writing experience and would help advocate for yourselves by helping us in that respect? Anyone?
Are there grants currently available?
There probably are. It would take some digging to find them, but I'm curious to know if you would have the heart to help, help do them, if so.
I think there are processes for a municipality to connect with like the USDA, with the.
Yes, there absolutely are.
Protection Program.
Right.
And that, those funds, you know, as this conversation with Mike Klein and some other people from the River Conservancy, they were saying there are, you know, in essence, pots of money for, exactly for this work in a number of government agencies. But they all lead back to the necessity for the municipality.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I'm certainly willing to help in any way that I can, nothing on a grant.
I'm not yet either, but I hope to be someday.
I think I would like to ask Jay if he has had any conversations with Scott Jensen regarding this. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much for having us.
Of course. I know you had talked to him at one point about Smith Brook. I didn't know if any conversation had happened over on this stretch.
So because Dover Highway, Dover Road is, is federal highway, they're coming to do an assessment of all the parts that are really connected to the roads. So the spot that washed across Marion Robinsons and so forth, they're going to be looking at all that stuff. I haven't heard when they're coming. Scott has, we've talked a couple of times. It's pretty much all the way up Dover Road that the stream's doing the same thing, as well as a lot of the brooks. I mean, even the smaller brooks have done the same thing. So I don't know how much money you can, I think you're going to have a lot of people interested in pursuing this, if this works for this section. And I don't know how much money, so you're going to have to decide, are you going to try to sponsor all the projects or how are you gonna, gonna do it? Because I think you'll have others that are going to want to do a similar thing. And it's, we've got underneath Monroe Bridge, where we've done all the work, the stream moved itself to the, the narrow part of the bridge. And, and they did tell us when we did it that planned on every few years, you're going to have to re-clean that section out to get it back to the wider section. So I understand that, but it seems like our rains are just coming, you know, they first, they were telling us they were fifty year floods and now it seems to be happening every other year or so, or every three years or whatever. But it's just, it's unbelievable. And we're, like with Adam's Hill, we're updating all those culverts to much bigger. And even the bigger ones sometimes weren't taking it to the last storm. So it's, it's definitely a lot more water than we're used to getting. So.
I do think that, yeah, the whole, whole structure, the Rock River along the Dover Road needs that. I think one thing that distinguishes this section is that there are the two bridges. That's, you know, Irene, of course, the Green Iron Bridge was so severely damaged. I think the only reason that the covered bridge, the new covered bridge wasn't destroyed was that the river broke up above us and made a mess otherwise. But I think that in both locations right now, just above the Green Iron Bridge and just above the covered bridge, Pablo's and Christine's, I think there is danger, threat to those two bridges if left unattended. Pablo's done a whole lot of work already, which would help protect the covered bridge. But it's just, you know, it's, it's an ongoing situation. And I think as far as even the investment the town has put into these bridges, what the state or whoever funded all these things, to protect those investments would help, I think.
Seems to me that one possible next step is to have a conversation with folks at WRC. They're very aware of different grants and which departments to try to access at the state or federal level. So they might be a useful first step to open these discussions and figure out what are some of the funding options and who else we should be talking to. And then I think prioritizing which part. I understand what you're saying, Paul, about the bridges, and that certainly is of concern. But to also consider if there are larger areas that we should be evaluating as part of potential grants requests. I'm just guessing that the price tag for something like this is big.
I would, and I was noticing this driving in Wardsboro as well, because I've driven all through our immediate towns, just looking at the damage and seeing what kind of gravel was coming out of the banks and where the worst erosion was. Oh hey, look, it's all clay, that's interesting. But as you get to the larger sections of river, where the volume of river is more because of adjoining tributaries, by the time you get to your section of the river, the Rock River, Hunter Brook, and Rock River West, South, whatever it's called, have all joined the main, the main amount. So your damage is going to be worse every time. It's bad enough up our way. We've lost houses and bridges as well. But you have the most volume going through your section of the river.
Well, then the Baker Brook joins.
And then Baker Brook joins after the covered bridge, thank God. Right, so then Williamsville is also a risk. And their banks, they have bedrock though, there is some bedrock in there.
True.
And you have none, as far as I've ever noticed. There is no bedrock there. And so you are the highest risk area in my, in my opinion. And I'm just a person who likes geology and observes stuff. So I would, and I, I would love to hear what inspectors think about that as far as that risk potential goes. But I would think starting where the water volume is higher and moving backwards up to the lower volumes might be the most responsible way to approach that.
Do you remember with the USDA funds, is there a match that you have to have?
I believe most of them are, that I've read about, have been seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent ratio. Seventy-five percent from the funding agency, twenty-five percent from the other sources. But I do know that the Vermont River Conservancy, the Connecticut River Conservancy are all agencies that are also tapping into funds to do these projects as well. So I spoke to Haley Colding of the River Conservancy, and they're very much involved with that floodplain restoration idea.
So you said Scott was coming down to do an inspection of that section at some point? You just don't know when?
Well, I think he'll probably be involved with Federal Highway when they look at it. So I don't, I haven't heard when either of them are coming. But Scott's actually supposed to meet with us on a couple of bridges, so I will be.
And it started this morning, and then we move on to other agencies?
Yep.
Will you allow me to join in those meetings?
Sure.
Great, I think you should, you could let us all know. Members available could be present.
Has anybody checked in with the Grand Agency of Natural Resources? They're the ones who are involved very much in the Emergency Watership Protection Program. There might be, might be a place to check too.
That's, that's who Scott works for, so he's, would be the one to talk to on what their funding's available.
Just, just when we met with Mike Klein, I remember the lady saying something to us about getting stewardship, ownership of the property, and they would go in and fix that up. Do you remember that, Paul?
Right, that was if they could get a conservatorship of that land in such a way so that it could always be held as a floodplain.
Right.
And I think that was probably more applicable to Gary's, that the floodplain was, was inland, like maybe with the spicers or something along that line, where the property itself wasn't so much, the houses and so forth weren't so close to the river. I think where the floodplains are more narrow, I'm not sure if that would be applicable now. But he also talked about the whole notion that in restoring a floodplain all along the river, of course, but would help anything downriver. So everything what might happen in that stretch would help the next stretch. Where it wouldn't have to the boat would help the next stretch.
Cause and effect.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. So it sounds like we will meet with the Federal Highway and Scott Jensen and get a report from them and then look into the other agencies to find out what grants or funding we can find that's available?
It sounds like if Scott is going to be coming down, I wonder if after he's done an inspection, if he could join a select board meeting and just talk with all of us, so everyone who has questions could get them on board. Folks who want to join can as well. And so we're all hearing everything at the same time. I think that might be helpful.
It might have to be a daytime meeting then. I know the last time we requested, the state employees weren't allowed to do evening stuff.
Well, I would be happy if we had a special meeting for anyone who could attend.
I'd be okay with that too.
Same.
I just think there's something so valuable in hearing it directly from the person so that you can ask questions and make sure that everyone is understanding and following up together rather than a written report.
Right.
I agree. Yes, finally.
Could we attend a meeting?
Absolutely.
That's the point, yes, absolutely.
So you could all be there and everybody could do this together. Great.
So then Jay, you'll try to get that set up? Perfect.
Thank you so much. Anything further on the neighbors of Rock River? We will get this going.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. We will get this going. Thank you so much for being here.
We're live. At least the plan will have a better view of the river under spring. We go out. I think that River Conservancy.
Just love this, okay. Six loves.
Yep.
Good to see you, being here.
For this reason, just to help bolster the floodplain.
We'll just have a moment and then we'll get back to it. Take care, folks, we'll be in touch. Don't forget that.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Be back later.
We'll drop out on the way home.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, dessert.
Come on to the front row, join us.
There's a chair right here. Unscheduled members of the public, anyone?
Just me, goodbye.
Bye, thank you, Jay. Having done, we'll go into old business and start with town beautification. Any updates still waiting?
I have no updates. Have we heard anything about the courthouse?
No, I'm meant to talk to Reed and I have not seen him, so.
That's okay.
I will do that for the next meeting.
It's summer, it's hard to get stuff done.
All right. FEMA, buyout for the South New Haven store?
Nothing at this point.
ARPA, I have nothing.
You have joy.
Do we, what is our remaining balance?
Is it two hundred?
About that, it's on all bets, so.
Is it something? I know we have talked about doing that other thing with a scholarship to help businesses start.
I don't have anything.
I, I said, I said that I had met with, spoken with Gary Fox from Rockingham, and they have a program there. And so I have it on my to-do list, but if someone can do it faster than me, please do. I was going to talk to him and find out more about their program, because they've been very successful.
Gary Fox, F O S S?
Fox.
With an X?
Yep.
Or C K S, I'm not sure.
F O X. Are you going to call him or do you want me to?
Nope, I'm just trying to put my brain, I have one more question. My last question was, have you revisited the idea of doing a scoping study for the feasibility of wastewater management at a larger scale for one of our villages?
I have not, I gave up on it because I felt like, I felt, I felt like there wasn't a lot of interest in it, and so I walked away from it. But it's available, that it could be started again.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Floodplain, river corridor buyout proposed changes, we've already done that. Personnel policy, are you still waiting for?
Still waiting. I'll give a reminder. I'm sorry, I've been busy.
Great, any, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
It's okay, it's just me, it's done already, we're good.
Any other old business? Any new business? All right, we will go into correspondence. We have one email from Dan DeWalt for the road crew. Hi Juanetta, please forward this to Jay and crew, too bad he's still not on. Hi Jay and all, this is Waylay and I meant to tell you sooner. During the big rain a couple of weeks ago, we went out onto Parish Hill Road at the height of it. Water was pouring down and into the road from many directions at a furious pace. However, everything that you guys did worked. It was all being channeled into the ditches. The ditches were holding up and moving water without falling apart. It was hard to believe how much water was being so successfully contained. Thanks for all of your forward thinking work. Best, Dan DeWalt from Ashen Island. This is dated August 12th. If you could forward this to him so he can see that, that would be amazing. And yes, our road crew is amazing and they do fantastic work.
They really are.
Thank you, Dan, for that email. I'm sure it will be greatly appreciated for Jay and the three here. And with that, if there's no other business, we are going to move into pay orders. I would like to thank everybody that came here tonight. I would like to apologize again for our special. I would like to apologize again to our special meeting for the mishap on Zoom and for people who participate in that kind of behavior. It's unnecessary and wrong. But we had a successful meeting and I thank everyone for being here. Stay safe and have a good week.